Okay, I'm gonna call this Montclair City Council meeting to order. And I appreciate everybody being here today. A special meeting, we're gonna recognize a couple of individuals in the Montclair Police Department. So with this, we will begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Someone asked the city clerk to announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Montclair Police Chaplain Josh Matlock, who is also pastor at Bethany Baptist Church. And our pledge will be led by Councilmember Lopez.
Please stand.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, I want to lift up to you that today are our fine city. And we pray that you would just watch over Montclair as you have for many years. And Father, we thank you for the fine men and women who are behind me, who helped to keep this city safe and well, our fire, our police, all of our first responders. Lord, we pray your protection and your hand of grace on them. Father, pray for our city council, all of our elected officials. We pray for our administrative staff and everyone else who helps make this city function. We pray that you would watch over them and care for them. And we pray that you would give your favor upon this city, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the world's greatest symbol of freedom and hope. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez?
I'm here.
Councilmember Martinez? Here. Councilmember Rue?
Present.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor De Trey?
Here. Before we go on to the next item, I just want to adjourn this meeting in memory of Rick Ferrero. He is the husband of our community activist commissioner Darlene Ferrero. So we adjourn his meeting, in his memory, excuse me. So next time his presentations, I'm gonna mix it up. We're gonna start with the Police Department Medal of Valor Award. Someone asked our chief, Jason Reed, to come on up. And I'm gonna ask my colleagues to join me down here at the bottom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city staff, city manager star. I'm honored tonight to present, as you mentioned, two of our officers with a Medal of Valor Award and ribbon for exemplary conduct that they exhibited on a call for service back in January of 2023. So without further ado, I would like to call the officers up front and center, Officer Travis Mandralla and Daylin Santoro. Well, I suppose everyone's here wondering why these two officers, these two fine officers are being awarded this highest honor that our Police Department bestows upon a member. So without further delay, I'm gonna speak about the call for service. Back in January 7th, 2023, approximately 5:49 a.m., Travis Mandralla and Daylin Santoro, both these officers responded with their lights and sirens to a house fire in the 4300 block of State Street in the city of Montclair. Upon their arrival, they quickly located that a residence was engulfed in fire with thick black smoke surrounding the entire location. The house was located down a narrow alley, limiting access for emergency vehicles. Officers, under the pressure, had the presence of mind to also direct responding emergency units to the appropriate locations to prevent any delay in life-saving efforts for other responding units, including the fire department. Officers Mandralla and Santoro were standing at the front door, and they were unable to see inside this residence through the thick black smoke that was spewing out of the house at this time. Both officers yelled into the residence and suddenly heard a response of a faint male voice coming from the living room somewhere inside of the residence, which they did not know the layout of the house. Not knowing the exact location of the subject, both officers entered with very little visibility into this house, which was engulfed in flames. The officers had to crawl at some point and squat to avoid suffocating smoke as they searched, and they located a 65-year-old male laying on the ground inside of the residence. The victim was large, heavy-set build, and was approximately 20 feet from the front door, lying on the ground in distress and unable to move. Officer Mandralla was able to start dragging the individual, with Officer Santoro assisting several feet towards the front door on their first attempt, but both officers ran out of breathable oxygen and had to exit the residence to gain a couple of breaths so they could re-enter. Officer Mandralla and Santoro had to exit multiple times as they dragged this individual closer and closer to the door. And they re-entered several times, worked together, and dragged him to a location where they could get him to the threshold of location. Once at the door, Officer Santoro assisted further with Officer Mandralla by dragging the victim from the front door to a safe distance away as large flames immediately began to emerge from the windows and doors. This call wasn't over at this time because the subject, who they just had pulled out of the fire, was barely able to speak, but he informed both officers that his niece was still inside of the house. Officers Mandralla and Santoro immediately located the female in a back room and spoke to her through a closed outside window at the location. She appeared to be trapped inside of the house. Officers Mandralla and Santoro ran around the now fully engulfed house, searching for a way in, but they were prevented by the extreme heat and flames. And anyone knows, when you drive even close to a residence that's on fire, you can feel the heat, even inside your automobile. So it was probably quite the scene. It was later discovered that the female had exited the house on her own, but officers were unaware of that and were still attempting to enter the residence, but were unable to do so. So for a brief period of time, I believe there was a lot of mental and physical distress, not believing the female was still inside of the residence at that time. The victim was transported, the victim that they pulled out of the house was transported to the Pomona Valley Hospital for treatment, where he was stabilized. He suffered from severe smoke inhalation, which was evident by his mouth and nose being heavily covered with black soot residue. We believe that if it was not for the life-saving efforts of Officers Mandralla and Santoro, the male victim would most certainly have perished in the fire. So tonight, I am honored to present, on behalf of the Montclair Police Department, the Medal of Valor to both officers. And let me explain what the Medal of Valor is, as described by our policy. The Medal of Valor is the highest award that can be bestowed upon a member of the Montclair Police Department. This award is earned through actions on the part of the members that is above and beyond the call of duty, displays a concern for the safety of others under circumstances that may expose them to danger without undue recklessness and with due consideration of potential risks to others, and is performed in a manner that enhances the profession or departmental image. Can we have a quick round of applause in the meantime? Now, after hearing that event that occurred that night, it leads me to think of some questions that I'm asked often, and all officers that can work in this profession understand that. One of the questions is always, what's the craziest thing you've ever seen or done? But one is, do officers ever experience fear? My answer of that, of course, is absolutely, we experience fear. We are human beings, and we get afraid, and we're scared by the same things as anybody else. However, in the face of fear is where courage and bravery prevail. Otherwise, police officers would not be effective whatsoever. These two officers exhibit both courage and bravery, which brings me to a quote by a person by the name of Ambrose Redmoon. "Bravery is not the absence of fear, but action in the face of fear. Courage is not the absence of fear, but rather the judgment that something else is more important than one's fear. The timid presume it is lack of fear that allows the brave to act when the timid do not, but to take action when one is not afraid is easy, and to refrain from when afraid is also easy. But to take action regardless of fear is bravery." So give me a round of applause. Officer Mandralla, please step forward. Officer Santoro, please step forward. These two officers are proudly display these ribbons when they wear their Class A uniform with a tie. These are decorative ribbons. However, the ribbons that you see, like these here, will be displayed throughout the rest of their careers, law enforcement officers. Both of these officers joined the Police Department, I believe, on the same day, in July of 2021. And by the end of their accomplished careers here at Montclair PD, I know their uniforms will no doubt be filled with more ribbons, exhibiting all of their accomplishments throughout their long careers here at Montclair Police Department. These Medal of Valors, however, will, I believe, occupy the number-one spot of real estate on that ribbon band. So be very proud of it. Thank you both for your service here at Montclair. And I now turn it over to Mr. Mayor for further comments.
Well, thank you very much to you both. And you can turn around if you like. You don't have to stare at that guy all the time. For him on this side. Nevertheless, to you both, I'm gonna commend you for your bravery. You know, part of your job is to protect the public. And that's what you did. You went into a dangerous situation, part of your job, in order to save people. And that's why you call Braves. And both of you are definitely made that definition. So on behalf of the people of Montclair, the City Council of Montclair, and myself, we'd like to present you both as certificate of your bravery. Officer Mandralla? There you are. Thank you. And Officer Santoro? Thank you.
What a privilege it is to stand before greatness. You are both amazing. And to try to get into a burning building when most people would run, that's just fantastic. Thank you for all the work that you do. So on behalf of Congresswoman Norma Torres, it's my privilege to present you the Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition that says, "In recognition with the Montclair Police Department of your Valor Award for heroically intervening in a dangerous situation and saving a life from imminent danger, through your quick thinking and courageous actions, you demonstrated exceptional character and selflessness that serves as an inspiration for us all. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community."
On behalf of the City Council, to each one of you in uniform, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service to the people of Montclair. Each one of you, again, also heroic, because you also have that same responsibility to protect the people, both in the Police Department and the Fire Department. So thank you for being here. And if you wish to leave, this would be a good time to leave right now. I don't think you want to listen to the NW presentation. If you're interested, you're welcome to say. Sorry, Louise. So we'll take about a one-minute break. I don't know. Here's the script. You want to read it, it's right there, and pass it on to Chris Saffelink. Okay, we'll come back and open session again. And when I met with Louise and I asked him, do you want to go first or second? I think if you go first, there's a chance you may get pulled over and get a ticket. He goes, no, I'll go second. I understand. So it's all yours, Louise. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but that is definitely a tough act to follow. And you're so fortunate and blessed to have a Police Department as such. My name is Luis Satina. I am with the Metropolitan Water District, and I represent Metropolitan in this region. And for many years, I served on the Cucamonga Valley Water District in Aqua Region 9. And here, I want to give you, I've been invited to speak before you, and I thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on some of the supply conditions in the state of California, some of the concerns that we have as the major wholesaler of water in Southern California, on both systems, the state and the Colorado, and some of the developments. There is some positive news. And so with that, I'd like to get into this presentation and answer any questions that you may have. I have to respect for your time. I know I've been told you got 10 minutes, and so I've got a number of slides, and I'll go through them as quickly. But if you want to ask any questions, please do at any time. Well, y'all know who Metropolitan is. We're the largest wholesaler of water in Southern California, in the state and in the nation. Six counties, about 19 million people, 26 member agencies, and you're in the Island Empire Utility Agency. And we support a $1.6 trillion economy. If you were to rank it, it's the 11th-largest economy in the world. Water is critical to this region. Metropolitan's been around for 80 years, and our original responsibility was to serve the region for supplemental water supply, meaning residents or communities or cities had their own water source, and we just came in and filled the gap. Today, some of the communities are taking 100% of the water from Metropolitan for various reasons. And so our responsibility has grown. Where do we get our water? We get our water primarily, originally, we used to say, from two sources. But in reality, now it's three. The region is providing a source. And the two important sources, years ago, that we depended on was State Water Project, as you can see up here in this graph, 30%. The Colorado River, 25% of the overall makeup. And the local supplies is 45%. That's the makeup of those sources of water that you see today. But 25 years ago, the local source was about 10 to 15. And the important sources was much greater. But we realized years ago that because of changing climate, because of growth, and because of the inability to build a certain infrastructure on a state level, those sources of supply reliability was diminishing. So we had to learn to do more from within and build infrastructure, recycle water, groundwater cleanup, and conservation. If I can get somebody to save a bucket of water, I created a bucket of water. And today, we're at 45% from a local, regional perspective in terms of creating water. Now, we've addressed all the low-hanging fruit, and any additional water supply is gonna have an incremental cost. And that's where we find ourselves today, having to do more from within, but it will be additional costs. But let me focus on the sources. The State Water Project, which we get primarily our water out of Oroville. It travels through the Sacramento Delta. No water is created in the Sacramento Delta. Water travels through the Sacramento Delta. And before it goes out into the ocean, we try to pump. The state of California tries to pump and give us a portion of it, a small portion, in fact. But over the years, it's been much more difficult to get anything out of the Delta because of biological restrictions, fish counts and so forth. And you've probably all heard about the Delta Conveyance Facility, the twin tunnels. You've all heard about Site's Reservoir. These are projects that are being envisioned to be built, and they haven't been built. So what we're having to do, if we can now, because not every year do we get 100%. In fact, this year is the first time since 2006 that we got 100% of our water entitlement out of the State Water Project. In the previous years, it was 5%, 5%, and 15%. And so this year, since 2006, we got 100%. Why? Well, it rained like crazy. It rained bonkers. And we actually had record snowpack, record snowpack. We did not have record hydrology in Northern California, but it was really good. It's like 68 inches, when the average is 51 inches per year. But what do you do with all that snow? And so I'm here to tell you today that, yes, the drought in the state of California is over. We get asked that question all the time. But the weather is changing. And we may have rain today and not tomorrow, or not rain for the next year. But we do have what I refer to as an operational drought, an operational constraint drought, and the inability to move water. And that's something that we're gonna have to deal with. The Colorado River is where I want to focus because that's a lot of discussion that's happening in Southern California right now. And this is just a graph to show you that the state of California has bounced back. If you can see, if I showed you this graph two years ago, the entire state would possibly be red and even that dark brown in terms of drought. This is giving you a gauge of how the drought conditions is in California. As you can see, about 75% is none. Okay, so the situation in the state of California has increased tremendously. But yet, we still have to address the ability to move the water from the Delta down to Southern California. Colorado River, we share that river with seven other states. It's broken up in two parts, the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin. We're in the Lower Basin, three states, Arizona, Nevada, California. That system has been in drought conditions for 23 years. And as a result, that system has two major reservoirs, Lake Powell and Lake Mead. On the state level, the reservoir that we get water from is Lake Oroville. It's full. It's at 99% right now. The reservoir that we get, our indicator reservoir that we get water from the Colorado River system is Lake Mead. That reservoir is eight times the size of Oroville. And that has to be shared with all those other states. What is the condition of that reservoir? As you can see, here it is. Water levels are extremely low on Lake Mead. In fact, it's 1/3 of its storage capacity right now. Why is that critical? Lake Mead is connected to something called Hoover Dam, and that produces power. Upstream of Lake Mead is Powell Reservoir. And Powell is connected to Glen Canyon Dam. If we don't have water behind those reservoirs, behind those dams, it'll affect our power production. Those systems are controlled and operated by the federal government, United States Bureau of Reclamation. They dictate the use of those systems. That system's been in drought for 23 years. And as you can see here, going back to 2000, those two lines, the orange and the blue, represent the water level in those two respective reservoirs. Look at that trajectory. Look at where it's at right now. And if we don't do something, and quickly, we're gonna get to the point where it says "power pool." And when you get to the power pool level, you're gonna have restrictions in terms of water you will get because power comes first. And we want to avoid that at all costs. And even below that, there's something called Deadpool. Deadpool is when a reservoir goes out of production because its ecosystem dies. A healthy reservoir has a healthy ecosystem to maintain it so that it doesn't have an algae bloom. And if you put bad water in a bad reservoir, you won't be able to take that water back out. So the federal government enacted a series of efforts and restrictions going back five, six years. Metropolitan participated in that. It impacted our supplies. We were able to augment the lost water supply through various programs. It was successful to a certain degree, but what we didn't have any control over was the hydrology on that system. And like I said earlier, it's in a 23-year drought, up and down, severe drought, mild drought, but it's still in drought. And as a result of that, the federal government is very concerned about these two reservoirs reaching the power pool level. And so they were about to implement a series of restrictions on us. And this graph is showing you what is at risk for this region because Metropolitan gets 25 to 30% of its water supply. In fact, this past year, prior to the rains, because the state only provided 15% one year, 5% the following, and 5%. We depended heavily on the Colorado River. Why? The bucket that you see with the multicolors represents the multiple type of programs that we have, fallowing programs, canal linings, with irrigation district and tribes along the Colorado River. As you can see here, more than 50% of our water supply that we get out of the Colorado River is as a result of those programs. If we don't have these programs, we run the risk of losing that source. That's 580,000 acre feet. This system can give us 1.2 million acre feet. What's an acre foot of water? It's enough water to provide two Southern California families with enough water for a year. What's an average family size in Southern California? Four people, so that's eight people. And this system was giving us 1.2 million acre feet with all these programs. Now, if the federal government was going to implement what they call a supplemental environmental impact statement, they were going to put in some drastic draconian supply restrictions, and it would impact all these programs because these programs, as you know, they're based upon agreements. And if they can't provide water supply for their constituents, then they have to reevaluate their agreements, and that would impact us. So you're gonna hear a lot about this, but we kind of dodged a bullet, so to speak. And what happened was, the federal government told all the users on the system that we're going to implement a restriction, and you're all gonna have to save 3 million acre feet of water by 2026. Luckily, Metropolitan, along with its partners in the Colorado River system, specifically the state of Arizona and Nevada, came to an agreement on how we were going to save the 3 million acre feet by 2026. And so I'm here to tell you that the agreement is in draft. The federal government is going to review it. They will make a decision, September, October. On that agreement, we are proposing measures on how we're going to save water. Luckily, the federal government and the Biden administration last year passed the investment, help me with this terminology, I forgot it, it's amazing, I forgot this, it's the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. And so they've set aside money for programs along this system, similar to programs that we've already have in place. And so that's gonna help us and come and work agreements with irrigation districts in Arizona and Nevada to save that amount of water. We have to save 1.6 million acre feet by the end of next year. We feel strongly that the proposal that we put forth to the federal government that they're going to review and give us a comment in October will help us realize that with our partners on the Colorado River. My goal to be here with you today is to let you know that Metropolitan is doing everything it can, not only in the region, but also on the southwestern United States with its partners, to come up with solutions. But at the same time, we've got to continue our conservation efforts. A lot of times, when people see rain, they back off, and we can't. This graph is showing you all the investments we've made on a local level and a regional level in terms of conservation, recycle water and groundwater recovery. We've got to continue on these endeavors. We're gonna do everything possible to secure funding on a federal level and a state level. In fact, next month, we're receiving an $80 million grant from the state of California for a facility called Pure Water down in Carson. Previous to that, we secured $50 million from the state of California during the drought. And we're hoping to secure another $50 million to increase our infrastructure, to create greater resiliency within our infrastructure. And so all of that hard work, going back to 1985, as you can see in this graph, we used to consume 210 gallons per capita. Today, we're at 129. This is an average. California has three different climate ranges, coastal, mid-range, and out here in Island Empire. But I can tell you, you can pat yourself on the back. Look how much water we save on an annual basis and a daily basis as individuals. We no longer brush our teeth with the faucets running. We no longer take six song showers. We're cognizant about that. We wash full loads. We've really changed our culture. And so Californians are not water wasters. You're doing a fantastic job. We just want you to continue doing it along with our member agencies. These are all the programs in the region that we've implemented with all your hard work and all your, you know, customer dollars. We're using your resources to put it right back in the community through local resource programs where we match... programs where we match our member agencies and their sub-agencies in terms of realizing projects like recycle water, groundwater reclamation, and other efforts. And this is the Pure Water Facility. Uh, we were able this year, luckily, through legislation, to streamline the timeline on the construction on this project. It was scheduled to be completed in 2032. Right now, we're looking at it 2028. Um, and we're about to get $50 million from the state of California to help us on this effort. It's a joint effort with, uh, LA County Sand District. And even it's a, it's a cooperative effort with the state of, uh, Nevada, some of the agencies in Nevada and Arizona. They realize that if we create water from within, it's less demand on the Colorado River that they also benefit from. We're working collectively. And so, uh, there is continuous efforts in terms of rebates, residential rebates for, uh, low-fleshed toilets, turf replacements. A lot of the local agencies offer a match and, uh, and more than that. And, uh, these, we're continuing these programs here in Southern California because they've really paid off on that previous slide that I showed you that reduced per capita consumption. So if I have any questions, I'll pause here and have an answer any questions if you may have some.
Any questions? Let's see. Let's start with Bill Ruh, Councilman Ruh.
Thank you. First of all, Luis, thank you for a great presentation. I appreciate the pure water efforts. I was fortunate, along with you and many others, to be there last year with Congressman Napolitano. And what a great project that is. And maybe down the line, once we get really into it, you can come back and give us more of a presentation on that. But I think it's great we're doing a job with conservation. But what I understand is the bulk of our water is being used outdoors on landscaping. Can we do a better job there on cutting back?
Yeah, you know, that's, a lot of discussion is on, uh, what we refer to as non-functional turf. If the only time that you're walking on it is to mow it, is it really necessary? We know it's aesthetics. We know it's aesthetics, right? But when we, when we find ourselves in these kinds of situations, we have got to reevaluate what we can do. Maybe you can find a common ground and have some drought-tolerance landscape and minimize the turf, or put in a, you know, a desert landscape, a zero scape, it used to be called. But we're, we're trying to look underneath every rock, so to speak, if I can use that phrase, to find water. And we've really done a great job indoors with all of our appliances. And like I said, there's an incremental cost to saving more water in Southern California. And so we're trying to find areas where we can minimize that cost. And the truth of the matter is, non-functional turf is the way to go, to reevaluate the need of it. And so that's a discussion that's going to be ensuing at Metropolitan on a board level.
And then one final, I know my colleagues have questions. One final thing. I appreciate the effort Metropolitan is putting through this. I know you and many of the other Met folks, it's been great. Tell Adele that I appreciate his efforts on this. I, I, you know, I look forward to seeing him in a couple of weeks. But, you know, this is so important to what we do because without water, we do not have anything in Southern California.
Indeed.
So thank you for, I mean, the well-managed, uh, water that we have, we're using, you know, essentially with more people, less than we did 30, 40, 50 years ago, with a whole lot more population. And that says a lot about not just conservation with residents, but what you have all been doing to make sure we have sources and renewable sources. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Luis, it was a pleasant surprise to see you in chambers in here tonight. I wasn't anticipating you being here. It's good that you're on this side of the West End. I know you don't live too far from here. But when it comes to water policy, a name that I'm sure you are familiar with, Congressman Doug LaMalfa, who represents the very northern part of the state, he's a rice farmer. I got the pleasure of working with him when he was in the State Senate. He's now a member of Congress. You mentioned Lake Oroville being 99% full. And it was through Doug LaMalfa's comments and him sending me updates on, uh, the reservoirs and dams up there. I believe they're dumping millions of gallons of water out of Lake Oroville, are they not?
Water is being released out of Lake Oroville to make room for the snow that's about to melt, it's melting right now. Yeah.
It, it is true that the, um, water that's being released, I, I'm stating the obvious, California does not have a plan in place to capture any runoff and use it for recyclable means.
Yeah, uh, that's why the Metropolitan Water District, along with the Newsome Administration and prior, previous administration, are in support of a conveyance facility. Uh, the objective here, and coupled with Site Reservoir, which is a reservoir that was intended to be built on the western end of Sacramento. Uh, and so if we could build that reservoir, coupled with the conveyance facility, you could capture additional runoff, put it in that reservoir, hold it in that reservoir, and make timely releases from that reservoir when you can pump it down to Southern California and the Central Valley. Unfortunately, we do not have those two facilities in place, and we've been trying for a number of years to realize them. Uh, but yes, water is being released right now from Oroville. And Army Corps of Engineers has a set of criteria that they have to release to make additional room for additional snowmelt that's going to end up going past that reservoir or even flooding, you know, communities along the Sacramento River.
I believe the city, or, you know, the city up there is Colinga, I believe, is the one that's in danger of being completely flooded.
Yeah, they, yeah, so they're making, they're doing everything possible right now. I, from what I understand, they're already building up some protections along the riverbanks and so forth.
I know he's, he's also stated Lake Shasta is completely full or, or, or near it, and they're considering also releasing millions of gallons of water.
Actually, water is being released as we speak because these reservoirs, they're, I will correct myself, they're not at 100%. They cannot have them at 100%. They're at 98%. They always have to have some freeboard, some leeway, uh, in the event of a storm comes in. And so they have to maintain that leeway. So whatever water's coming down has to go right back out because they can't keep, they cannot fill it to capacity as for protection. Otherwise, otherwise you'll compromise the stability of, of the reservoir itself as we, as we saw in the spillway in Oroville years ago.
And then one final comment, you'll be pleased to know that we, uh, installed desert landscape at our fire station number two in conjunction with the Chino Basin Water Conservation District. So we're definitely doing our part whenever possible.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
Likewise, likewise.
Mayor Paul Tam Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick question. Um, you showed us the slide of Lake Mead from 2022, and it looks pretty dire. The water level looks significantly lower. Is it reasonable to expect that it looks different now?
A tad, a tad. Uh, you know, like I said, yeah, because I said that reservoir is eight times the size of Oroville that we, and we, and Oroville's 3 million acre feet. So that reservoir is 25 million acre feet capacity. And so what that, that, that bathtub ring, which we call, right, that's like 80 feet. So in order to go up a foot or two, that's a couple million acre feet. Yeah. So, but, but it is, it has improved a tad, uh, which is good news. And we do expect it to increase in elevation, uh, because that graph that I showed you that the reservoir storage were going like that, it's going like this now. It's got a little bit of an incline, right? But it's got a long way to go, and we don't know what tomorrow brings. This is why today is a day to take advantage, like the little grasshopper and the ant, right? I've got to make sure we take advantage of the, the supplies that we got today for tomorrow.
Thank you very much for your response.
And of course, um, um, if you didn't read about City of Phoenix, um, I guess state of Arizona State has told the City of Phoenix that they really cannot do new development in the future unless they, the developers are able to find a source of water. And that's the situation they're in right now. Of course, Lake Oroville, if you want to go back to it, a year ago, it wasn't at 98%. It was a lot lower because we've got a lot of snow this year. That's what we have to Larry Lake. I will say here in the IUA area that I, which I serve on the Sewage Policy Committee, is, uh, one of these IUA is looking at is developing an advanced treatment plant. Uh, that plant will allow, uh, the wastewater to be recycled into the Chino Basin. Environmentally, we need it, in order to ensure the basin is, is clean. And so that is a project that we're moving forward to. And then one of the things I've been told is we're very fortunate to have Chino Basin with, below us, but it gives the opportunity to have a lot of local supply of water. And then if we do a better job moving forward, especially with wastewater and make sure it's properly treated, that will be a benefit to this region. So Luis, uh, I don't know if you have anything else to say, but thank you for coming.
Mayor Deter, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. You're, you didn't, go ahead.
So between financial contributions and public outreach and education, what would you like to see local government doing better to support the cause?
I, I think, uh, local government, its, its cooperative effort with this local, uh, those who have their own water districts, right? Probably working with the kids in a younger age. Um, I'll give you from my experience at Cucamonga, right? I don't know, I don't know some of the programs that you have out here, and so you might have them in place already. But I think the younger generation is where you got to get them. You got to get them early. Uh, and we had a fifth grade poster contest that Metropolitan supports as well. And it was quite interesting that, um, at Cucamonga, the, uh, fifth grade poster contest has been in place for 30 years. And so when I had the good fortune of, of, um, presenting the winners, I was presenting, uh, awards to children whose parents were part of the first five years of the poster contest. And those parents at home already had, in practice, all the conservation measures. Uh, and I think that's one of, one of the aspects of it. And the final point that I'd like to make on this one, uh, because I don't want to take a lot of your time, and I thank you for the question. I, I think there's a big need, uh, and they'll do a fantastic job, seniors. We had a docent program where they love interacting with the youth, and they love interacting with the community just in general. Uh, and they could be great emissaries to carry the message. And, uh, I think, I think they do a good job in, in representing not only your community, uh, but also the needs of the community, specifically from a water supply perspective.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, Luis, well, thank you very much. And if you don't know, Luis is also a member of the Cucamonga Valley Water District Board.
I was, I was.
You was?
Yeah, I opted not to run for reelection, so, but I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any item that's on the agenda or to address the council on an item that's under the consent calendar. You will have five minutes to address the council. Uh, any item that's on the agenda, the city council can add a comment on. If you're on Zoom, you will just hit your raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're on the phone, you hit the star nine. Obviously, if in the audience, you fill out the speaker's card and provide that to the, to the city clerk's table. So at this time, I want to ask the city clerk, she has any speakers?
Yes, uh, the first one is Bill Kaufman. Still here? There he is.
I am again. Hello? Mayor, councilmen, council ladies. I had to, I don't think it's distributed yet, but I have been up here preaching the merits of, um, and the revenue sources for a, uh, legal cannabis dispensary, actually three you can have in your town. And, and I went to artificial intelligence, and I asked them the question. And the answer is what you'll see in the distribution. There's many, many merits and, and very little negatives. But the reason I'm here, I've gone through and secured a commitment for the property on the corner of Marino and Central, which is going to be Shoe City on the base. We would be on the top floor, and they would remodel the building to accommodate us. I've gone through and I've assembled an application for a business license, 35 pages of compliance to state law, life scan on the principles, the financial wherewithal of the principles. And I'm basically told that the city is not accepting those applications. And I'm not quite sure, wow, if, uh, I mean, it's a legitimate legal business, no different than if downstairs they're selling shoes. And so my question to you is, as you read what artificial intelligence tells you, and actually, it's, it's very comprehensive, um, why we can't open up a legitimate enterprise that will commit to, I believe, in what I sent you when we did our economic study, somewhere in the area of $3 million yearly. And it will also, um, with its neighbors, we have security, we have everything that the city would want from us. And nevertheless, when I go into the city, they say they're not accepting applications. And I guess that's my, I don't expect you to answer me now, but I hope somebody might look into that because, you know, all around us, this is what's going on. There's millions of dollars at risk. Uh, and again, I'm not here to promote use of cannabis or cannabis products. It's not what I'm here for. I'm here to show an economic, economic opportunity that many, many cities are taking right now. And we, and the group I have with the experience that we have and the location we have, could be very beneficial to the city. That's it. I'll let someone else have the podium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next is Jordi Ubaldo from Montclair Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you and a good evening. Um, my name is Jordi Ubaldo. I am one of the Montclair Chambers event coordinators. Again, good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Uh, it is a pleasure, and we are gearing up for the summer. We have been really busy, but I wanted to go ahead and cordially invite everybody and along with the public as well to our networking breakfast that we have scheduled for Thursday, June 15th, um, from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. over at Waterwise Community Center. We have strive, physical, um, physical therapy and wellness, and they will be talking about the benefits of therapy in the business world as well. So we invite everybody to join us for, for that event, followed by our yearly event, Board of Directors Installation Ceremony, that is going to be on June 22nd from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. over at the Waterwise Community Center. We're going to be having lots of, uh, we're, we're going to be having, um, anywhere close to 80 to 100, uh, people there in attendance. We're also going to be doing raffle prizes as well. And again, we'll be installing our new Board of Directors as well, but also celebrating our ambassadors that have been helping us throughout the year. Followed by the, um, exciting news for the grand opening of the Montclair Express Car Wash. Um, that will be scheduled for Friday, June 23rd at 10 a.m. And they are actually going to be raffling off some great prizes, but the first 100 vehicles that receive a car will be receiving a free car wash kit as well until supplies last. So we look forward to seeing you guys there. Any questions, comments, feel free to answer.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for the chamber on the Jamboree event. All right, next speaker.
All right, we have Joe Mantle Leon, Monte Leon.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. I'm Joe Mont Leon. I am the store manager of Stotz Equipment. Uh, we're located, located at 4811 Brook Street. We're your local John Deere dealer. I'm here to talk to you today about the security issues we're having at our place of business. We are being under constant attack. There probably isn't a week where our alarm doesn't go off where somebody's breaking in to our facility. We've got about every type of fencing you can imagine at our place. We've got a block wall with razor wire, and they just throw carpet remnants over the top of it and hop right over. They just take snips and snip it. Along the railroad tracks is where a lot of it's coming from. Along that fence area, we've got wrought iron fencing. They just take bolt cutters and come right through. And once they get past that, they've got some other secure areas, secure areas we have, and in those secure areas, they're, um, chain link fence, and they just cut right through it. There is no stopping it. We have a solution. I'm working with a fence contractor, and that's why I'm here, is I need your help getting it approved. It's a solar-powered electrified fence. It goes behind our current fence. We just got broken into two weeks ago. It's literally, I mean, I didn't bring it, I should have. I've got a stack about this thick of alarm calls over the past two years. It's constant. And I'm just looking for help. We are trying to grow our business. We're ready to invest more money in our property so we can build a larger building to have more employees, to produce better goods and services to our customers. And I'm at the point now where I either have to decide to invest in our current property or look elsewhere. And dealing with all these security issues makes it really tough to stay. And we've been a Montclair business for well over 20 years. We've been here quite some time. We'd like to stay here. This is a great location. Our customers know where to find us. We've been We've been happy up until the past three years. We went and visited the police earlier in the year. We talked to one of the officers, because the watch commander was currently tied up, which I understand. They understood where we're coming from. They mentioned that if they had extra deputies or officers, they would love to have them patrol up and down through that railroad, because it is just a thoroughfare of crime. The watch commander did call me later, about 45 minutes after I got back to my office, and we had a good discussion. And he kept saying that it was a city issue that they have to approve the fencing, but from a personal standpoint, if he had a business, he could understand, but this would be a great solution. So again, I'm looking for your help to work with our contractors to get this done, so we can, let me back up one more step. It's not only just product. I have drivers that come in to load product up in the dark hours of the morning, two, three, four, because we cover all the way to San Luis Obispo. And there are times where they're really scared to come into the facility, because they don't know what they're going to be walking into. And I just need to provide a safe environment for my employees. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, and I'm going to ask our city manager, Starr, if he can meet with you, with his staff, to go through it. And I do apologize, you know, this is an issue that, you know, there's just a lot of people in the streets that, that probably should be someplace else, and I won't say what that is, because I don't want to violate the ACLU, piss off the ACLU. But it's a growing problem in not just Montclair's region, and it's very unfortunate what's happening. And so, again, city manager Starr, if you both can meet, have a meeting, discuss this plan you have, see what else we can do, invite the chief as well, community development director, Michael Diaz, and we want you to be in Montclair. You've been a long time business here in Montclair, and let's see if we can improve the situation.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then maybe Michael Diaz, maybe give him the card, he can contact you. Thanks, Michael. And get ahold of Ed.
All right, and next we have Luis Farias.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, staff, public at large. I am the fence contractor that he was referring to. We're Amrock, we're a company out of South Carolina. We've been working with businesses that are impacted by the rising crime trends. We have been working with planning staff here in the city. For several months, we've had no back and forth with them, it's been radio silence. So we thought it was important to bring businesses so you could hear directly from them. Nelson Blanco, who was also here with United Rentals, he had to step away and deal with business issues right now. But he was also going to speak to the same thing that Joe spoke to. He is at a point where he needs help. There are break-ins, there's the issue of public safety. People are scared to go to work, and they shouldn't be afraid to go to work. People should be able to go to work and feel safe at work. So we're asking for your help, for the discussions to continue, and for a solution to be put in place, so, excuse me, they can stay in business and not have to go somewhere else.
I understand quite well, and it'll be nice if our friends in Sacramento can, can go back and redo some laws. And I'll stop right there, because I don't want to piss off the ACLU, but we're going to, like I said, our city manager, Starr, will meet with you guys and try to see if we can find a solution.
Very well. Thank you.
Sir, can you give me your name again, please? Luis?
Luis Farias.
Spell your last name.
F as in Frank, A R I A S.
Thank you, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Next is Nelson Blanco.
Nelson? No? Yeah, he's out.
Oh, he's the one who left? Okay. And then Carolyn Raft has her hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, Carolyn Raft, you're on. You there, Carolyn?
Yes, I, I don't know what's happening in my machine, I did not have it raised, but first of all, I would like to congratulate our two officers, Officer Centaro and the, and Mendero, about their Medal of Valor. That was a very gracious thing that they did, and I'm glad that we have police officers that are like that, that would risk their own lives to go in and save someone else. So I would just like to congratulate them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, we'll now go down to consent calendar items, and I'll ask my colleagues, do they have any items they wish to pull? Anybody on my left? You have something, Denise?
Yes, I'm Mr. Mayor. I have C4.
C4?
And C4 and 8.
C4 and what? C8?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. All right, how about my right? Anybody on my right?
Mr. Mayor, for purposes of abstention, item A1.
A1, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be noted.
I actually had four items, two for just a brief comment and two for the question. I, I will go ahead and just pull for sake of time, just C Charlie 2.
C2?
C Charlie 5.
C5? Okay, and anybody else on my right? Doesn't look like it.
The one that I want to pull was C4, that's already been pulled.
Okay. And I will see Diane or Ed has any items. Okay, so with that, let's start with item C2.
Let me get to my page, Mr. Mayor.
C2.
Yes. Question to the city manager. Let me just read my notes here real quickly. Okay, we're going to be granted an additional $50,000 for a total not to exceed of 215. Did I read that correctly, first of all? Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. Now, here is my question. The, and this is to go towards paying staff salaries and program costs. Is this for, could we use this, or is the intention to use it for additional staff or existing staff that already are providing the service?
I'll let Ms. Richter respond to that.
This is for existing staff.
All right. Because my next question was going to be then, with the budget, mid-year budget review, which I missed, if that was taken into account in anticipation of this or not, but, all right. No, I, I think this is a worthwhile and great program. Marsha, you and your staff always do a good job. I have never been disappointed, so that was the only inquiry I had. Thank you.
Great, we are down one transportation coordinator, so we're hoping to-
This will help fill it. Perfect. Great, thank you.
And Councilman Lopez, you also had C1?
No, I decided not to pull for the sake of time. Yeah, I'm going to pass.
And you had C5?
Yes. Let me get to my page. Okay, in, in the fiscal impact portion, we, it states that we currently have in the fiscal year budget, an allocation of $185,000 to provide crossing guards for the 2324 school year. And I know that the company in question, All City Management Services, is raising their hourly rate because of state mandates regarding the state minimum wage requirement, and the increase is there. That is why they're coming to us for an increase. My question in the, my question is prompted by the next line in the fiscal impact paragraph, which states, because projected costs are estimated to exceed the amount budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year, the department will evaluate actual costs and determine whether to request more funding during the mid-year budget review process. Now, I wasn't, because of my illness and absence, I missed the budget review process that happened, I believe, a month ago, two months ago. Is this statement that the staff report is mentioning addressing the existing mid-year budget review process that was just adopted, or are they going to have to wait a whole year out from now to get the funding if there is an increase that they're alluding to in the report?
Okay, so, no, this is addressing the fiscal year 2324 budget that will be coming to the city council. There was a request in that budget for this particular program. Every year, the number that the department budgets in relation to security services at the trans center is larger than what the actual history of expenditures is. When staff goes through the budget process, we look at the history of expenditures, including what the current year's expenditures are, and we compare that to what the department is requesting. We see that there are typically variances, sometimes significantly, between what the department is requesting and what the history of the expenditures are showing. So what occurred in this particular case is that, yes, the department actually did request a number larger than $185,000 that was reflective of a adjustment that was indicated to them by this particular vendor. But every year, we receive the same indication from the department that the vendor is requesting an increase related to hourly rate. We take that into consideration, and we have come to the conclusion that the number that they typically request is typically overinflated. And so it is our process to provide a number that is more accurate or more reflective of what their actual and anticipated expenditures are going to be. So what we tell the department is that this is the amount of money we will provide you for this next fiscal year. If, at mid-year budget point, so in this particular case, in February of '24, if it appears that the vendor is on track to exceed that amount, we will make an adjustment at that time.
You confused me towards the part of your answer, and I didn't want to interrupt, because I wanted you to finish your statement. You stated security at the trans center. How is that tied into this company?
Oh, I'm sorry, the crossing guard, they both do the same thing. The crossing guard vendor and the security vendor at the trans center both typically come up with a higher number, and I was thinking of the trans center. This is for the crossing guard service, the same thing. They come in with a larger number than they typically require, and it is not our practice to allow the departments to overbudget what is actually needed. So in looking at the history, looking at the trending, we try to come up with a different number, and so that relates with the crossing guard company as well.
Okay, different companies, though?
Yes.
Okay, and just for record, what, who do we use at the trans center?
I forget, what?
Securitas?
Securitas.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I believe you're saying your ed is the security company is, they have to make $290,000. We're going to budget $185,000, but we don't know how many man-hours they're going to charge us for the entire year. Is that part of it?
Correct, that is usually how it works out.
And at the mid-year next year, if it's greater than $185,000, we make the adjustments.
And the crossing guard company does the same thing. They anticipate a maximum, but it usually comes in significantly below that.
My, my question was just, I was confused with the statement about the police department coming back at the mid-year budget review, asking for the request, and I, as you answered, it would be for next year, because it is, as I just not, I didn't dawn on me that we're already thinking about 2324. I was thinking the present budget. Thank you.
Okay, so, C2 and C5, have you done C4 yet? No? Who's, who's C4?
I did, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question, actually, just to refresh my memory. I'm sorry, I'm sure that I knew this when we first had the agreement with the district attorney's office, but my question is for the, the victim's advocate. How, how many hours per week are they there? Are they, is there somebody there every day? Is one question, and the second question is, do they stay at the station, or do they sometimes go on patrols with the officers, or respond to calls with the officers?
Hello, to answer the first part of the question, yes, the person is housed at the police department, have their own cubicle, they work in the detective bureau, actually. So they're there 40 hours a week. Sometimes on Fridays, their, their hours do differ. And they also provide a phone number, a cell phone number for after-hours consultation and whatnot. As to your second question about being in the field, yes, they are, this person that we have has been a tremendous value to victims in Montclair. She does do a lot of phone contacts, but she also does go on site with a lot of victims of, of various crimes within the city. Sometimes she shares resources with our mental health person from the county as well. So, for example, a family is victimized, whether it be a fraud case or a serious violent felony, she'll work and get services for those people at different, different times. She even, sometimes if someone calls in and would generate a call, normally that would have been for an officer to recontact a victim, she sometimes will take the lead, and she'll tell us, I'll handle that, give that call to me, and she'll free up officers for, to handle emergency calls. So I hope I answered the, both questions.
Yes, you did, but I have a follow-up question. You said that she works 40 hours a week, and then she provides a phone number. So if she's already worked her 40 hours and she gets a call, will she come out, or does she, somebody else come out, or?
She, we haven't had an, an emergency that were, we can't really predict an emergency where she would have to come out on scene that night, but she does provide as a courtesy, just like all of us that have our phone numbers, they give me a call if, if, you know, it's, it's basically on a, just don't hesitate to call me, I don't care what time it is. But normally, her rollout, her, her hours that she's there is when she's there at work, at the station with us. But again, tremendous value that this program has provided from the county countless times. And also, remember, the crime is not over, there's court proceedings that come up, there's, there's several things that a victim of a crime has to go through, and not only that, she can, she can brief, there's been times, I believe, when they've given rides to people to appear to court, in court and things like that. So it's a tremendous asset for our, our crime victims in Montclair. And that has to be a crime that Montclair has handled that's specific for us, so it does tremendously help us there.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else there, then I guess we have C6. Who's got, who's got C6? C6, JPE Joint Union High School District.
I passed. I passed on that.
All right. The last one I have here is C8.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Another clarification question. I'm excited about the idea of the community garden expanding, but when I looked at the staff report, it said something about poor La Vida working at the site. What's actually happening at that garden?
So the idea is that we'll be able to use these funds to kind of reestablish some programming we had hoped to do. We also want to use the program to fix some of the irrigation issues that are going on there. So the promotor program is doing some health education. So programs at the garden for the folks that have the garden plots, talking to them about organic fruits and vegetables, how to do special recipes, that type of thing.
Thank you for the clarification. Actually, I was thinking it was at the fruit park, but that's not what it's about, it's the garden.
The garden.
A whole different thing. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Regarding the-
Oh, Bill Ru.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Bill, did you have something?
Yes, I had, C4 was pulled, that was an item I was going to pull for a question. Is the, and is, this is funded for 2023 to 2024. Is it grant funding, or how is that funded, the victim's advocate?
It's funded by the county.
Right, but I'm saying, do they fund it directly, or is it a grant they write for? Do we apply to them for a grant?
No, the county is funding it directly.
They fund it directly. So 2023 to '24, if we want this from 2000, if it's successful, we want it 2024 to '25, do we go back to the county, or they, do they just give us this money?
Yeah, so we actually had to submit for the, for the position to be housed here at the city of Montclair. So in that perspective, I guess you can call it a grant, but it is funded by the county, and if it's to continue, we would have to resubmit.
That's what I was getting at. How, how is this funded? So we apply?
Correct, I, don't, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's AB 109 funding is for the county, is what the county utilizes, but it's no cost for Montclair, they provide this person to us.
Right, and, no, what I'm looking at is, if it's successful, continue it. So we need in then, in the future, to apply again for this?
I believe, I believe the, the purpose of this was just a contractual agreement to continue the person, I don't believe there's an application process, it'll be up to the county to, to continue the program. We hope it continues.
Right.
You know, one other thing I didn't mention earlier is, you know, even, even for funeral arrangements for unfortunate deaths that occur in the city, they also work with families and pointing them in the right direction when, and getting resources available for those who are unprepared for those types of, you know, unfortunate occurrences, so.
Thank you, that answers the question, appreciate it.
I believe it's AB 109 funding.
But, but we do have to agree to accept the position. The county doesn't force it on us. If we're not interested, then we do not have to accept the position, but we are very much interested in keeping it. So in that sense, yes, we would have to renew the contract with county.
Councilman Lopez?
Going back to the issue about the community garden, who, who does the landscaping and maintenance of the property?
of the property?
Right now, we've been contracting out to help with that, but I know I've been working with our public works director, Monica Harretia, to see if we can maybe get that under one of the other contracts that she uses for other city parks.
Okay, just a comment, I do get statements from residents about it being an unsightly location. I know that the center part of the parcel is mainly where the garden is and the outskirts of it, which go even to the fence, are dirt, weeds, and all that. If that could be addressed, you would assuage some residents' concerns that live in the area. At the moment, they don't see it as necessarily a pleasant sight, so just, the messenger just relaying the message. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Move by Rue, second by Johnson, and we do electronic vote. Here it is.
And also noting that Councilmember Lopez is abstaining on A1.
Okay, that's adopted 5-0. We have now communications, I'll start with the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items as indicated on the agenda. One to meet in closed session regarding pending litigation, one to meet with our designated labor negotiator, and one regarding real property negotiations. The only other comment I would make was, it was very impressive what the two officers did, and quite touching, I mean, that's, those are fun things to hear about, so that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
City manager?
Two comments on two issues that were raised tonight. One is the application submitted for a cannabis business license. Commercial cannabis business operations are not currently legal in the city of Montclair. We do not have an ordinance in place, therefore, we will not be accepting applications related to anybody who wants to take out a business license. So until there's a change in relation to the ordinance, that's just going to be the standard, we will not accept applications. I'd also suggest to the individual that there would be a process, should the city council agree to adopt a ordinance that legalizes cannabis, that would require that any applicant go through a vetting process. So one really needs to be careful about investing in properties prior to that process, so that's a risk that a individual is taking at this point in time. As to the electric fencing issue, there has been requests for the city to change its ordinance that it would allow for electric fencing. City staff has had some major concerns with electric fencing in the community, there has not been a satisfactory explanation as to how those concerns could be addressed, but over the course of months, and maybe even going back a year or so, staff has talked about this on a regular basis, and I think we've recently come to a acceptance that electric fences probably would be of a great assist, particularly in certain areas of the community, and one of those areas would be along the Union Pacific Railroad Track Corridor. So in that regard, Mr. Diaz, our community development director, is looking at a redraft of the ordinance related to electric fencing, so we will be moving forward in making a presentation to the city council on that at a future date.
Thank you. The mayor, I will not be, the next city council meeting on June 19th, I'm heading out to Massachusetts for a week for a family vacation, so I will skip that meeting, Mayor Paul Tim Johnson will be in charge of that meeting, or preside over the meeting, not in charge, preside is the appropriate term. As far as budget, we have two dates, June 22nd, which is a Thursday, will be the actual workshop at 6:00 PM, and then we'll have a special meeting on Thursday, June 29, to consider the adoption of the budget. Just want the councilmembers to know about that. I do want to say, again, a good job to staff, of all the departments that were involved, the memorial event, and also the jamboree event from last Saturday. It was both very successful, in my opinion, kind of wish more people show up to the memorial event, but everybody wants to be at a barbecue, I guess, but the jamboree event, obviously it was a big attendance. I do want to recognize during the month of June, there are some significant dates or celebrations occurring. I believe last Sunday was Cancer Survival Day here in June. Tomorrow, June 6th, will be D-Day, that's the victory and liberation of Europe during World War II. June 12th, later this week, is the Philippine Independence Day. June 14th, which is, will be Flag Day for all the fathers. June is obviously, June 18th this year, I believe June 18th this year, is Father's Day, so if I don't see you, happy Father's Day to all those here in the audience. June 19th is Juneteenth Day, as we know, is the day that the last slaves were discovered, that they were now free. This month is LGBT Pride Month, and we just want to recognize all of our community members from the LGBT. And then finally, this month is also the Caribbean American Heritage Month, we just want to recognize our residents from that part of the world. I just want to announce, I did attend the city-county conference about two weeks ago in Lake Arrowhead, it was very informative, especially on three items. Last two Fridays ago, I did attend the Little League here in Montclair, their closing ceremony. And then finally, I want to recognize the Montclair Women's Club, they donated a bench at Sunset Park, I know a couple of the members are on the dice here, but thank you very much, the Montclair Women's Club, along with, I forgot Marcia, she's also a member, so is Andrea, a member, so I'm not in trouble now, I might go home. So, I didn't forget anybody else, right, the Montclair Women's Club? Okay. So, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. You might notice I have a little bit of a glow today because I spent, I enjoyed every single minute of the Country Fair Jamboree, I was there the whole time, and it was such a fantastic price, a wristband for $10 or $15 for the kids to play all day long, I definitely took advantage of that, and there, it was a huge turnout, very beautifully put together, so I wanted to say thank you. And also, I'm happy Pride. If anybody is interested in local events, downtown Pomona will be hosting a Pride event this Saturday, I believe. Thank you.
Marcia, by the way, any idea what the attendance was like?
Our estimate was about 4,000.
And what's the last year's estimate?
3,500.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Paul Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. First, I want to commend Fernando Saltes for the way that he handled the planning of the Country Fair Jamboree. He was very inclusive with all the possible departments that could have been involved, up until the 11th hour, he was still asking questions, "Do we have this done? Do we have this done? Do we have this done?" And so, you know, kudos to him, he and his team did a fantastic job, obviously. And also, I wanted to commend the, as is always the case, the human services staff, who, I think chamber staff arrived at 7:30, we thought we were all early, no, 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 city staff was already there, setting up stuff, and I'm always impressed by how quickly everything gets up, and it's like a well-oiled machine, there's no problems, it's smooth and easy. So kudos to you, Madam Richter, for the success of your team. And secondly, I have a parks question. I know that we don't have the park for the splash pad, but my question is, so now what? So for those people who are multiple families living in apartments with no air conditioning and there's triple-digit heat, what can we offer them other than referring them to another city? Can we, I don't know, turn on the sprinklers for during certain hours? Can we have the fire truck come out? Can we, what? We have to provide some kind of relief for those people who need assistance. And as some of you may have seen here recently, when there were problems at the Almahoffman Playground, and there was tape around because certain areas were blocked off, well, the first time I was there and I saw the tape, I didn't really understand what was going on, because the tape was in small shreds on the ground. Apparently, the space had been taped off, but this community is so hungry for that space, that they just ripped all the tape off and continued to play. And then one little girl gathered them up and was just swinging them around like it was her little personal pom-pom or something. So we, I just want to just reiterate how important the parks are, and then I have one question, which mayor may not be answered today, but I have a question about the inspection of all of the playground equipment in our city. So I know having, and those of us who are parents, we know when our children are little, we had to get down on the ground to look at things from their eye view and just start feeling around to see what they could feel, and I wonder if we do that kind of intense inspection of our playground equipment, maybe we can talk about that at another meeting if you're not prepared to talk about it today. And then the last thing I have is, there's been some frustrations from our residents about their rent increases, and I wonder if at some point in the future, we might consider some form of rent control. I don't know what, how that works, really, I just know some cities have it. I don't know if we think it will be viable or not viable or whatever, but I'm hoping that we can discuss it at a later point. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You guys like to bring stuff up here, and we're not prepared to talk about it, so I think on some of your questions, there, staff probably get back to you in an email and regarding that.
Of course.
Regarding the rent control ordinance, that's a policy decision, you know, if council wants to put it, you make a motion, second the motion, the council wants to discuss that, that's, the process is here. That's your prerogative, if you wish to do so, and with that, I'm going to go on to Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be back, it's been a month since I sat on the chair and was at the meeting, a council meeting. While I may have a different opinion, Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
And, excuse me, we have to be careful with the Brown Act, we cannot talk about it, so if you want to put it on the agenda, make a motion, make a second, next meeting we can talk about it, but we cannot talk about it here, what our position is. I have a position too, but let's be careful.
I wasn't finished with the comment. I want to know, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if you wish to put on the agenda discussion of the topic, if you are of that opinion, while I may have a different opinion, I will second your motion to put it for discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez, it is not my intent to put it on the agenda now, it's my intent to put the information out there for staff to discuss, and at some point, at a later time, after they've had time to consider it, then I will ask that it be put on the agenda.
Okay. Few items. Regarding the playground equipment, I know on May 29th, a resident had posted that her child was hurt by the Shark Park mat. I hadn't been here since the last meeting, and of course, that was May 29th, she posted on social media. If that could be looked into, if it hasn't already been addressed, if that could be looked into, great, and I appreciate that. When staff does look into the playground inspection issue, if I could please be emailed on that result and reply, I'd very much appreciate it. Last meeting also, I believe, May 1st, I did request, and I want to go on record again, regarding the industrial vehicle issue and the potential ban on parking, could I please get the call volume and logs and the source of calls regarding complaints for large vehicle parking? I was serious in that request, I'd like it, please, as soon as possible, it's now been a month. If I could get that from staff, Mr. City Manager, I would appreciate it, as it would help me with respect to that decision.
I'm sorry, can you restate what you're requesting? I'm not sure I understood that you were ever requesting something.
There was discussion, I looked at the tape, and it's stated in the.
I'm not saying you didn't, I'm just saying I don't recall it.
I'm requesting the call volume and logs and the source of those calls, I'm not asking for names, for the number of complaints, the volume of complaints regarding bulky vehicle, large vehicle parking, basically from the, for the past two years, I believe it was Mr. Fondario that stated that the calls are there, the complaints are there, I just would like to see the volume, how many have come in, and the source of those calls, whether it was a resident, whether it was a visitor, whether it was a business, and it would help me in my decision when that issue comes back before us. Regarding Shoe City, I was going to announce that it is open now, and that is one of Montclair's newest businesses on the corner of Moreno and Central, so if you'd like to, or in the need of a new pair of shoes, by all means, frequent the store, support a new Montclair business that is open, give them a little bit of your money and invest a little bit of your tax dollars in the city, which helps benefit public safety, parks, public works and all, and basically greases the wheels of the functions of the city, so please consider Shoe City, visit them, and patronize them if you could. I wasn't here last meeting again, and I didn't have the opportunity to offer my condolences to Diane Evans-Robins, whose mother, Betty Evans, passed away. I did read the obituary, and 89 years old, one day shy of her 90th birthday, I mean, that's an accomplishment, 90 years old. Diane, I don't know if you know this, but I've knew your mother for several years through Republican Party politics. She was a very dedicated and active member of the Chaffee Republican Women Federated. She was also always known for selling raffle tickets at the events, checking in people, making sure people paid for the dinner, and could make sure she would hand them for the check or the money, so that way they were not freeloaded at an event. And two times, I bought a raffle ticket from her, and I managed to win, but there were a lot of times I didn't win, so I always teased her about that. But my condolences and prayers to you and your very large family, I have to read in the obituary, you come from a very large family, so God's peace be upon you guys. On June 9th, folks, I know that just two exits to the east from us is Euclid Avenue, and a lot of Montclair residents travel to and from on the 10 freeway. June 9th through the 12th, a 55-hour closure at Euclid, that is westbound. Three lanes will be blocked, and the on-ramp will be shut down. 55 hours, starting June 9th through June 12th, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, so on that Saturday, avoid it, just go around, take Arrow, take Foothill. And I thought, my God, I'm drawing a blank on the name, forgive me, that happens a lot where I draw blanks. Ruby, from Supervisor Hagman's office, I thought she would be on the call. June 7th, which is Wednesday, Supervisor Hagman is having his district office open house. It's June 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, at his district office in Chino Hills. If you are interested in attending, please give them the courtesy of an RSVP by calling them at area code 909-465-5265. Again, 909-465-5265. And then finally. Let me just find out the years that this gentleman was a resident of Montclair, I had asked him, I should have been prepared, but I had a brain pickup, if you will. Oh, well. I believe this gentleman, some of you may remember, Amos Jackson Young, Sr., who was a resident of Montclair from, I believe, 1988, 89 to 94. I believe he lived in the condos by, close to Ramona and Holt. It was reported just late May, that at the young age of 73, after a 55-year journey, Amos Young finally got his degree through Chaffee Community College, and he got it as an associate of science degree in business administration. What makes this a very interesting story, there is a Montclair connection with him, of course, being a resident, raising his kids here. His college education path began in 1968, when he went to Alfred University in New York. He then subsequently went, over the years, to the State University of New York, Los Angeles Valley College, and then Los Angeles City College. He stated, "I wanted to finish my studies to be an inspiration to my children, grandchildren, and other children raised in foster care." Amos is the pastor of Kingdom of God Revelation Ministries, and he runs a mental health nonprofit in Pomona, and he currently resides in Fontana. As I stated, he is a pastor, and he has his theological degree, but he served as the executive director of the Pomona Valley Children and Family Services Collaborative, Pomona Valley Micro Enterprise Loan Fund, co-chair of the Los Angeles County Pomona Office of the Department of Children and Family Services, coordinated the California State Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Division 1 Parolee Reentry and Employment Social Services Resource Fair. Why they couldn't come up with an acronym, I don't know, because that is a tongue twister. But nonetheless, since leaving Montclair, actually, when he was here in Montclair, he was very active. He served in our youth accountability board, he would speak at the dais, and with his love to preach, he definitely would preach from the podium, and many times would get a standing ovation or a round of applause from the audience, and it could have been about rent control or whatever the issue might be, he turned it into a sermon. But I wanted. But I wanted to congratulate Amos, 73 years old, never gave up. For anyone out there who hasn't had the degree and just figured, you know what? I may have gone to college for eight years and had other business ventures that may have distracted me, and I had deaths in the family or whatever the hurdles may have been. At 73, you can still complete it and still get your degree. So I want anyone that listens to that to be encouraged. God bless you, Amos. I believe you probably told me, I think you said you'd watch the tape later. But congratulations, and you are to be commended, and you're an inspiration to those who look up to you. And I hope anybody that hasn't finished the degree, I don't care what age, go and get it. And as he said, there's plenty of FAFSA funds available and plenty of grants available right now for continuing education. He said, "There's more money than there are applicants," and he knows because he took advantage of them. So God bless him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging me.
Councilmember Rue.
Yes, I will start with noting some passings. We did note earlier this evening, we will adjourn to the memory of Rick Ferraro, the husband of Community Activities Commissioner Darlene Ferraro. Councilmember Lopez already noted the passing of Betty Evans, whom I also knew, the mother of Diane Robbins. I also knew her father. They were longtime residents of Armsley Square in Ontario. And we certainly extend our condolences. Another passing of somebody did not live in the city, but contribute, might as well have lived in the city. Her name is Lois Cox. She was a teacher at Monta Vista Elementary School for 46 years. I had several family members who knew her, and they said she was truly a teacher's teacher. So our condolences to her family and to the many, many students whom she educated over the years. On Memorial Day, it was noted, we did have a very good turnout. Could have been better, but it was a good event. People were happy, I had a lot of positive comments. The Country Fair Jamboree went well. I too was there from about 11:00 in the morning till about 6:00 or so when it concluded. Most of the vendors seemed happy, families were happy. I will note that Montclair Hospital was there doing free blood pressure checks, and that seemed to be a fairly busy booth. Appreciate what they were doing with that. I want to note, I did attend the ICSC International Conference of Shopping Centers. It was held in Las Vegas, Nevada. At the conference, at the convention center, took up most of the convention center. I was at the Embassy Suites by Hilton, a non-gaming hotel, which is fine with me. Talked to a lot of different retailers. I don't know whether they will fit in Montclair. I know last time I attended, I had several, and apparently, they just weren't going to be a good fit in Montclair, at least, you know, to some people. On that Sunday, there was an event I did not attend. As a full-time working council member, it's sometimes very difficult for me to get away from work and I have to take my work with me. There was an event at Top Golf, sponsored by BBK, Best Best &amp; Krieger. I was unable to attend because I was dealing with work. And kind of good I didn't, because it would be a disclosable event. I would have to disclose whatever the value of that is on my forms. Louis Holmes, the Monday evening, had a nice dinner. So I hear, again, I was busy with work, I could not attend. And that also would have been a disclosable event. Before I went to this conference, I knew of those events, and I called the FPPC to find out what is and is not disclosable. And those are definitely disclosable events. We quite often hear in the city about the people who are not following the rules driving. I'm going to say they're probably in the minority. For the last two and a half years or so, we have had the reconstruction of the bridge on the I-10 freeway over Benson Avenue between Moreno and San Jose, at least in Montclair. If you use it the other way, it is Sixth Street in Ontario and Seventh Street in Upland. There have been, from what I can see, very few accidents. The people seem to be very, very cautious driving through there. I'd say sometimes a little too cautious, but better err on the side of caution. And I want to applaud those residents who are good drivers, who try to follow the rules and do the very best they can in what are increasingly difficult situations. The other thing I want to note is that it was 55 years ago today that then-Senator Robert F. Kennedy died in Los Angeles after being shot at the Ambassador Auditorium. It was a sad day in American history, and he was certainly somebody who, during his campaign, brought out the issues of race, poverty, and inequality in this country. And he truly wanted to do something about it. Whatever you may think of his policies, whether you like them or dislike them, it's never a good idea to take justice into our hands that way. And finally, and the mayor mentioned it, tomorrow marks 79 years since the invasion of Normandy. I did have two uncles there. One actually was an uncle-in-law, if you want to put it that way. My father's sister married him. And the other one was his brother, my Uncle Pete. They were at Normandy, I heard the stories. And I can tell you, there was a lot going on that day. The term I can use, it's a Latin term, esto exemplum alis. It was Cicero, and he said, "Be a pattern to others." Certainly, they were. And I'll be very short with this. That evening on the radio, Franklin Roosevelt, President of the United States, had a radio address, he called it a prayer. I won't read all of it tonight. "He started out, Almighty God, our sons, pride of our nation, this day have set upon a mighty endeavor, a struggle to preserve our republic, our religion, and our civilization, and to set free a suffering humanity." He continued and later on informed the American people, "Some will never return. Embrace these, Father, and receive them, thy heroic servants, into thy kingdom." And he concluded and said, "With this blessing, we shall prevail over the unholy forces of the enemy. Help us to conquer the apostles of greed and racial arrogance. Lead us to the saving of our country and with our sister nations into a world unity that will spell a sure peace, a peace invulnerable to the schemings of unworthy men, and a peace that will let all of men live in freedom, reaping the rewards of their honest work. This will be done, Almighty God." I can say this, if today, and we have the same issues then, as Franklin Roosevelt mentioned, but I believe if we can muster even half the maturity, dignity, goodness, and courage that those men did 79 years ago, maybe, just maybe, we'll find the moral character as a people to truly pursue that more perfect union the framers envisioned and make gentle the life of this world. And as a note, the average age of a soldier at Normandy was 26 years old. Thank you.
Thank you. One more thing I forgot to talk about, you know, four years ago, I graduated from Monklaw High School, actually, this month. And it was ironic that last month, I was at the Monklaw High School 2023 graduation, addressing that class. So memories for myself. Finally, on the discussion on rent control, I would suggest if staff can put together something in writing, maybe educating the staff council, excuse me, what the laws are of rent control. And I know the city of Claremont has gone through this process right now. And maybe in that letter too, in your memo, explaining what Claremont is doing and what they're considering, just kind of educational piece for the entire city council to understand. And no rush on that, because I know staff's got a lot of work to do. All right, we have committee meeting minutes, and we're going to go into closed session. Thank you.